We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on August 1st, 2023 to order at 3:06 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available brought to you. I do have one card, and that is Randy Ailman.
Good afternoon, and Randy Ailman, retiree for City of Waco. Got two or three comments, and I'll be really brief. Most of you know that I have a passion for our retirees. You know that. I'm not giving up. I'm just letting you know. So, comment one. I came in a year ago at the council meeting, and of course, I know how the city budget works, having worked at the city almost forty and a half years. And I kind of asked that the retiree COLA would be placed near the top of your priority list, okay? And of course, when I looked at the budget paperwork, we scored a low score of thirty-nine. So I have to admit, I was a bit bummed when I saw that. Another comment. I've mentioned in some of the memos or letters I've written in the past that y'all saw, I've been really concerned about the potentially low-income retirees with the city. I think there could be, out of twelve-hundred-plus retirees, there may be a hundred or more, who knows, that are at or below the poverty level. So I was going to ask or suggest that you get with TMRS, run a report, see what they're making, and see exactly how many are at the poverty level. And then my last comment has to do about the informal report. The last sentence, above all the numbers, it says, "As this liability grows, there are potential impacts on the city bond or debt rating from the rating agencies that may increase the long-term borrowing cost of the city." Well, I may be wrong, but I came up with two things that show that when you incur a COLA liability, it goes down over time. So I guess I couldn't resolve that in my mind. TMRS has something that says, "In the short term, a repeating COLA costs more. But in the long term, the UAAL decreases and the funded ratio improves," which I think is the goal of the council and the city manager. The other thing that I was curious, it's not on here, and I'm not sure what the city's plan or intent is, but when there's a COLA given, TMRS gives cities, if they so choose, twenty years to pay it back. So that's my other thought, is that think of it as a mortgage payment. Once you start paying on it, your balance is going to go down and down and down over time. So honestly, I couldn't understand why this phrase was put in here, "As this liability grows." So I just wanted to point that out and share my thoughts. So that's all, that's all I have.
Oh, man, I appreciate you. And you didn't mention it, so I'm just going to make sure you did see that in the proposed budget that has been filed by the city manager, there's a thirty percent reoccurring TRMS COLA that was included in his proposed budget.
Yes, sir, I do know that.
Our staff is available. I'm sure they'll get with you to try to resolve some of the questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else here to speak on any work session item? If not, then we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from the city manager.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. And Mr. Allman, if you'll stay for a minute, I'm going to talk about that IR. You might want to hang tight for just a moment. We do have one change of the agenda today I wanted to highlight. You've got at your place a revised attachment on Resolution 517 dealing with boards and commissions appointments. Wanted to highlight that at your place today. And then on employee recognitions, wanted to just say a special thanks to the team that put together this six-hundred-plus-page agenda in my absence. I've been gone for a couple of weeks, and man, they had their work cut out for them. So certainly appreciate city attorney, as well as Deputy City Manager Emerson and a few others that put together, you know, sixty-plus items that represent a whole heck of a lot of work by our city staff. We do have the one informal report today that we've heard the speaker on. It's IR on the Texas Municipal Retirement System Cost of Living Adjustment COLA. The report is a precursor to a presentation we're going to have in just next week, I believe. Is that right, Missy? The eighth of August, we're having TMRS actually come and present to the council and discuss some of the very things that Mr. Allman's identified, as well as discuss the nine or so options that we have related to COLAs, because the council does have a few more options at its disposal due to legislative changes this session. I did want to highlight, as you did, mayor, that the proposed manager's budget does have a thirty percent recurring, non-retroactive COLA planned. And of course, we're listening for any guidance from the council if there's any modifications you want to see. But I look forward to TMRS being in the room with us next week and detailing out each of these options and seeing what the council's perspective is. We do have twelve public hearings today on the agenda. The first is Public Hearing 504, which is a public hearing on our 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan for the CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds. That'll be covered, I believe, by Gailen Price. Looking around the room, maybe it is. Yeah, you going to do it, Gailen? All right. You're not going to have your new assistant director do it? Okay, all right. And then the final eleven public hearings will be covered by Clint Peters, here in a few minutes in the work session. As I mentioned earlier, we had quite an agenda, fifty-five resolutions. It was hard to make the choice on which ones to highlight, but I did pick three to highlight this afternoon. The first is Resolution 528, which is the Cottonwood Master Plan and Conceptual Design. This resolution would approve a professional services agreement with Walker Partners to provide a master plan and conceptual design at the golf course. For those that are not familiar, the golf course was originally developed in the eighties and has done really well, both performance-wise, but it's starting to show its age. If you head out, you'll notice an undersized drainage system that's causing some complications on the course, as well as a need to renovate greens, irrigation system, bunkers, and other elements. The project, I did want to highlight, the project will have a subconsultant that specializes in golf course architecture on the team. And Walker Partners luckily didn't have to go far to find that team member in Chet Williams, who's worked on several high-profile golf course renovations around the country. He's a Baylor grad, and he lives locally and has lived locally here for a couple decades. So he'll be a subconsultant to the team, and I expect the combination of Walker Partners and Mr. Williams to really provide a compelling renovation plan so that Cottonwood continues to be the leading municipal golf course in central Texas. It'll take about ten months to do that plan, and I suspect we'll have a couple of updates to council as we get further into it, so you can see what the thoughts are. Second highlight is Resolution 565. It's the Upper Flat Creek Interceptor Resolution. As council's well familiar, the Flat Creek Sanitary Sewer Basin is experiencing significant growth, particularly in the industrial sector. This is the sector where Graphic Packaging Project is and multiple other large industrial projects. And the basin's infrastructure was already stressed by existing businesses and neighborhoods. This project, improvements contemplated in this item will provide a new thirty-six-inch wastewater interceptor. Oh, thanks for the map. Perfect. The interceptor I'm talking about is in the green, and that'll facilitate significant flows over to our other, in the red, the other thirty-six-inch interceptor. This, as I mentioned, this project, while it's downstream of Graphic Packaging, will take their flows and send them back towards WMRs. We expect that the notice proceed to be signed pretty quick, later this month, I believe, and have about a three-hundred-day construction timeline to substantial completion. And as you note on the map there, there's that little thing called Interstate Thirty-Fives in the project limits. So the staff will be working that one pretty hard from a project management standpoint to ensure delivery within those three-hundred days. And lastly, Resolution 569, which is a resolution awarding the contract for construction on the Highway eighty-four corridor, what we're calling the Phase Three B project, for another phase of wastewater expansion in the fast-growing Highway eighty-four corridor area. If you look closely on this map, you could actually see my house. I'm not going to point it out, because I don't want you all to come see me. But I am towards the right side of this map. And I wanted to highlight it for a couple of reasons. One, it's important we continue to expand sewer capacity, because as you note on the screen, there's a lot of vacant land out that direction, and we need to continue to provide options for residential development. The project is about a three-thousand-linear-foot project to go to a thirty-inch wastewater pipe, and it'll connect over to the Church Road lift station that we recently improved on the left-hand side of the screen. One of the most important things I wanted to highlight on this is not related necessarily to the sewer line work, but rather what's going to happen on top of the ground. This project is in conflict with our Cotton Belt Trail, existing hiking bike trail there, and will cause for a about three-hundred-day closure of the trail between the Church Road Lift Station or Old Arena Road and Trailblazer Park, which is shown on the right-hand side of the screen. So utilities team, as well as Parks and Rec and Communications are, you know, put together a communication strategy to let, make sure people know that a well-used asset and well-loved asset will be down for a better part of the year, starting later this year. Upon the project's completion, though, all that concrete will be replaced and be a new surface. We do have four ordinances on the agenda today, all of which are second readings. And mayor and council, that will conclude my comments, and I'll take any questions you might have for me.
Holmes here. I just had a couple, and I wanted to, on the resolutions, I wanted to just echo you on the number five sixty-nine on the five-and-a-half million we're spending on that major wastewater project. And that really is part of an overall, I want to say it's thirty-five million plus when you count in the lift station and all the other line that we're putting in out in West Highway eighty-four. So we're upgrading that entire system out there just to accommodate the growth and to accommodate the need for the wastewater utility out there. It's not, it's not a small check. I mean, and we're trying to parcel these out year by year and not kind of blow it all in at once. But again, part of a bigger deal, and this one's going to shut down the trail for a while, as you said. And I don't know if there's a way to optimize that. I know we're trying to figure it out. It's going to be out for eight, nine months, something like that. If we can optimize when it's closed, or it'll just be closed for a while. But it'll come back bigger and better than ever, I guess, too. So that's good. A couple other ones that I had, not to take everybody's time, was the five nineteen. I just wanted to talk about briefly command staff on this Safe Streets for All, Safe Streets and Roads for All program, the grants that are available now in the federal BIL, the bipartisan infrastructure law. There's about five billion that's out for municipalities to apply for, and we, I think this is a five, six-hundred thousand dollar, seven-hundred thousand dollar one. So great, anytime there's federal money that they're handing out, it's our money going to Washington DC and then coming back to us. So let's, I command staff for getting that back here in Waco. Five twenty-seven is one that I really like to see. This is talking about an investment in system software. And I think it's our goal, you know, a lot of, we're doing so many things on council right now, trying to fix infrastructure, trying to get everything caught up with the police and fire, a lot of very expensive projects. This one, to me, some of the feedback I get in Waco is that, you know, our service is getting better and better. And I think this kind of system, the customer information system and enterprise asset management system, really, to me, we're prioritizing customer service here. Something you don't see, but these systems, I think we're, I don't know if Mike's, I saw Mike, Mike's out there. Mike Seiright and Kristi Acosta, yeah, run our IT department. And I just like seeing them bringing these things, maybe that our residents don't see, but these are so important to improving our customer service, and which I think is a goal that over the next few years, we just want to become best-in-class. So I appreciate what Mike and Kristi are doing there, and I like to work towards these kind of systems. So thanks, Mike. The last one I wanted to bring up was the number five forty-nine, the Mars Drive over there, that we, looks like we are on schedule to get that. It's Midway Schools, kind of their front door to dropping people off, kids off, students off. It looks like we got that done. We're not completely finished with it, but we got the main parts of it wrapped up. And Josh, and council member Boardrude is not here today, Midways in both my and Josh's district, and we were focused on getting that kind of in place before school started. Looks like we did, we got, we beat the deadline there. But anyway, that's all I had. Good stuff. Fifty, what is it, fifty-six resolutions?
Not bad, huh?
Yeah, a lot of them.
I would be, if I can, if I can provide you an assist on the highlight for the customer information system and the asset management system, you know, we had a group, Mike and a few others really worked diligently on that. And I want to highlight Lisa Tyer, who kind of got us started on this and spent a lot of time on it, as, like you said, alongside Mike and others. But Lisa's really provided a strong leadership to the project, and it's going to take us eighteen to twenty-four months to get that installed. It's a big lift. But like you said, we can't be a high-performing entity without the systems and the professionalized systems to back up a utility system that has close to fifty thousand connections now, or somewhere around that. A little higher, okay. She says it's higher. We're growing. But yeah, I wanted to highlight Lisa's efforts there in that project.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2023, 516 through 570. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, then that'll be the consent agenda. And the next item on the agenda is Work Sessions 2023, 496 through 499. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Our first one is a familiar topic. Work Session 496 is discussion of public art for the Waco Regional Airport Terminal Building Modernization Project. And I invite Joel Martinez, our Director of Aviation Services, as well as Amanda Dyer from Creative Waco up to the front, and looking forward to them showing you some imagery from the project, as well as discussing the final two pieces of art and getting your feedback on them. Hello?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I've got Joel Martinez, Director of Aviation for the City of Waco, with me and our director of public arts and development of Creative Waco as well. We're going to give you a little bit of project background. We've brought these two concepts or these two artists and some of their works in May. So we asked them to kind of, pay me some comments, and so we'll get them on the microphone.
There we go.
So we've asked them to look at some of the work and take in some comments to better reflect what our community intentions are with this artwork. We'll also, we'll go through their final art concepts, you know, we'll stay in concepts, and then we'll talk about their timeline with that as well. So I'm going to turn this over to Amanda and let her walk us through where we are and how we got here.
Hello, everyone. So back in March of 2021, there was a decision to add art and culture features into the airport project and that were emblematic of Waco. In November of 2021, city council approved the contract with Creative Waco to facilitate the public art procurement process. In August of 2022, city council approved two of the four pieces of artwork. And then back in May of 2023, just a few months ago, city council approved the artist's and preliminary concepts for the two artworks that we'll be discussing today. So as a reminder, the first piece of artwork was, is proposed for the Welcome Walkway, the area linking the Arrival Lounge and the Main Concourse. The piece is meant to showcase the diversity of Waco by integrating repetitions of the phrase "Welcome to Waco." The phrases were submitted by community members and their languages of origin, and a design was created by the artist. The space also is meant to, I'm sorry, the piece is also meant to incorporate the space's natural light. The budget for the project is twelve thousand dollars, and the dimensions of the piece are roughly fifty and a half feet by nine and a half feet. So you'll see here the original artwork that was submitted by artist Irene Leonardaki at the top of the screen, and then at the bottom is the revised version that she has submitted for, that we're recommending as the final design. And just as a reminder, as I mentioned before, Creative Waco invited community members to submit the "Welcome to Waco" phrase in their languages of origin. From April to November of 2022, we received approximately a hundred and twenty submissions that were made, and fifty-one separate languages were represented. So you'll see that, again, the top was, is the original piece submitted in May, and then the bottom is the revised version. So I'm going to talk through with you the changes that the artist made upon recommendation from the review panel. So first is that the tan horizon was removed and replaced with a blue sky from the top to the bottom of the piece. And then the blue sky, the text was enlarged, and the text is going to be negative space. So I want to make it clear that the artwork will be printed on a clear glass wrap, and so the words that you see here that look like they're in white is actually going to be clear. So it won't be as bold as it is depicted here on the screen. It'll be more of a subtle version where you can see the letters being cast through that transparent glass wrap. You'll see that the sizes and the fonts of the words were changed and diversified, so there's a lot of different ways that the words are depicted. And also, the phrases that were in the sky were typed submissions from community members, and then the artist retained the integration of some actual graphic design elements that were submitted by community members into the artworks that are there in the building. So like, yes, so Joel's pointing with the pointer there where it says "Welcome to Waco." So those were submitted by local community members as a graphic versus just a typed submission, and so the artist integrated those. Also, the artist adjusted the scale and the placement of the structures so that the Alaco Building is clearly shown as the tallest structure, and then the courthouse and the water tower on either side on the right are not so set apart from the rest of the structures. Also, the jet silhouette was changed to a CRJ seven hundred, which is currently servicing the airport. And then lastly, American Sign Language was added. In the bottom-left corner, you can see a depiction of finger spelling of the words "Welcome to Waco." And so that will be there for viewers to see. So the next artwork we're going to review is the Waco Backdrop, and that proposed location is the main lobby of the terminal. It's meant to create a high-impact and fun artwork that invites social media interaction. It will be one of the first impressions created on arrival and one of the last things a person sees upon departure, and it's meant to provide an iconic "I'm in Waco" moment. And the budget for the project is twenty-five thousand dollars, and then the artwork dimensions are eighteen feet by six feet. So again, you'll see here at the top of the screen, the original proposal titled "I'm in Waco" from artist Mike Tabor. And then at the bottom of the screen, the recommended final design titled "Waco, Texas." So Mike Tabor was selected as a finalist because of the strength of his overall body of work, and he worked with a design review committee made up of Director of Aviation Joel Martinez, Assistant City Manager Lisa Blackman, Council Member Andrea Bearfield, Creative Waco CEO Fiona Bond, and myself to identify themes and imagery that would best represent Waco. So you can see here that there's a simplified design that's centered around one iconic Waco symbol. And so it was something that really stuck out with us as the review panels, like what is the iconic symbol of Waco that really can tell the story of the past, the present, and the future? And we all landed on the suspension bridge. So that's what we really thought would be that iconic symbol. It includes both the original brick-faced Suspension Bridge Tower on the left, and then the current stucco finish on the right. You can see a longhorn, a magnolia, and a jet that illustrate the evolution of our local economy. Also, there are river grasses, a blue heron, that show local flora and fauna, and then also call attention to the importance of our local waterways. And then the Suspension Bridge cables are emphasized and serve as a unifying element across the design. And you'll see there in the bottom, the color palette that was recommended. So this color palette is the original color palette that the artist submitted with his, the original artwork. And we got feedback from both the review panel and city council previously that thought that this was a good color palette that we should move forward with. So that's what we're working with for this revised design. And you can see on the right, one of Mr. Tabor's existing works that shows that there's going to be color blocking and shading utilized in this palette. And so the design has been brought to you as a sketch rather than a full-color rendering, because adding color at this stage would likely produce something that doesn't accurately reflect the completed work. And the review panel has given recommendations to the artists for documents to incorporate, including sheet music from compositions by Jules Bledsoe, newspaper articles about Doris Miller's Military Wars, and some other ideas. And Mr. Tabor will research what documents are available and that also meet copyright requirements to be able to be included. And so I want to just point out, if you look at the image on the right, you can see there are words and faint images that are incorporated into the artwork. And so he uses a collage technique to use, to add copies of original documentation that are relevant to the story that he's trying to tell, and layer those over and under the paint and the images that are depicted in the artwork. The project timeline moving forward, of course, we have today our work session presenting the final design drafts, and we're hoping for a resolution at our next council meeting on August fifteenth, presenting, a resolution presented that will give approval for final artwork designs. And then the final installation of the artworks will be completed in step with the final phase of construction of the airport. And so what we are recommending for today is council consensus on both of these final designs, and then to direct staff to return for the August fifteenth city council meeting for final approval of the design by resolution. So I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you might have.
Holmes here. I love this. I mean, it's really cool-looking, and you've got a couple of pretty neat designs. I like that, looking at him here, the one where you go from the old-looking bridge with the brick style over kind of to the new, into the, with the paver stuff over there. It's pretty neat ideas, and I like the color scheme on that, too. I like the one that's sort of more, the images are more, they're not to scale or anything, but they're more kind of imaginative. But yeah, I like both these stills. The one issue that I have, the Suspension Bridge being the cool part of, you know, one of the historic parts of Waco, is it, on the one with the patchwork? Can you put that one up?
Sure.
Back a couple more slides.
Back to the glass wrap.
Oh, the glass wrap.
Yes.
Yeah, whatever we're calling that one. Where this one appears to have piers underneath. It's not really depicting a Suspension Bridge.
Ah.
But I guess maybe that's the interurban piers, or the tortilla targets, you know? I don't know.
Yes, yes, exactly. I learned about that last week.
So I don't know if that would leave it too bare, right? We don't want to talk about that. That's right. I don't know, just think about it. It might make it look too bare in the middle, but that's not a Suspension Bridge that we're depicting. But neither is anything else exactly what it's supposed to be, so I'm going to let that hung up on it.
How many times have we looked at that and it just slipped? Thank you, Jim.
Maybe. Unless you were trying to put the interurban in there, that's kind of neat history, too. But anyway, that's my only comment. This looks great. And for those of us that travel quite a bit, I've been out of town in more regional airports in the last couple of months, and we're going to have a cooler airport than all the other regional airports combined. So I'm excited about what this is looking like, and I appreciate you guys' leadership and management of the process. And thanks, Andrea, for representing council on this. These are great ideas.
This is, I'm incredibly excited to see the the finished, sort of finished project, the last the last draft of this. We kind of worked through this a while. And because how do you, how do you really express our stories in in abstract imagery? There's so many to tell. And we clearly can't tell them all, but we wanted to invite people with just enough that they want to leave that airport, not only to get to their destination, but to find the things that they saw. Like Jim, you're in and out of airports. That is your first impression of a city.
Exactly.
Whether you've been there before or not, that is the first thing that you see. That is your welcome. And we want this to be one of those things that are lasting and memorable. Not that, you know, folks just go to hang out in airports, but I mean, we want to make it a place that you won't mind. You absolutely won't mind being in, whether it be 5:00 AM or whether it be on the last flight. So I think with the the welcome wall says a lot. And you can see it, the way it's built, I believe, you can see it as you're entering the terminal and as you're exiting. It's different, but you'll, it's something that will catch your eye whether you're coming or going in the airport. And I think that that it was very thoughtful. I am excited to see what Mr. Tabor's interpretation of of these images become. His work is fascinating in the fact that you can integrate all of those unique things, whether they be print, whether it's music, whether it's two dimensional texture, if that's a thing. But it adds a richness into what that work is and makes people want to look deeper. So I'm super excited about this and and absolutely support this.
Any other questions? Well, how's the how's the airport coming? What's our, what's our, when are we going to open up? When's the ribbon cutting?
No pressure, sir.
This mic deal was not picking me up. There we go. So with this change order, it adds obviously some time. And so I think we're looking probably November. So by holiday travel, I think we'll be good to go. I think, you know, aesthetically speaking, you know, everything inside the building that passengers are going to see are going to be pretty near complete. I think we're waiting the the long, the thing that's holding us up is going to be the emergency generator. And so we're excited to add that that feature as well to the community. But but yeah, so hopefully holiday travel will be ready. Lock, stock, and barrel there for sure.
Mammoth is up, though, right?
What's that?
The mammoth is up, though.
The mammoth is up, yes.
Thanks. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, our next work session is 497. No, that's not the right number. Sorry, I messed up on my number today. Is it right?
Yeah, it's right.
We had way too many resolutions. We need to stop that. 497. And I believe Nick Sarpy or Director of Government, as well as Paul Kane, Assistant City Manager, are both going to come up. And I'll just go ahead and call both of them, 497 and 498. They both relate to the budget process. First one's a discussion of the property tax certified appraisal role and certified taxable values. And the second is discussion of the city manager's recommended budget for FY '23 and '24. I believe I'm turning this over to Nick. Is that right, Paul?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Bradley mentioned, we're going to go over two work session items, the '23-'24 budget as well as the tax rules. All right, so to start out with, just where we're at with the budget. So we started a budget beginning in January with our capital improvements program process beginning. In February, we opened up our operational budget process with all the requests due by the middle of March. In April, we held the budget retreat and identified the council priorities for the development of the '24 budget. In addition, in April, departments presented their proposed budgets to the city manager's office. In May and June, we've been providing you with regular updates on the budget and where the developments taken us. On the 11th, city manager provided his preview of the proposed budget. And then on July 17th, we filed the proposed budget with the city secretary. So as we discussed at the July 11th meeting, the '24 budget had several key core priorities, which include compensation benefits, infrastructure investment, public safety, focus on business units, and then parks, recreation, and quality of life investment. So some of the highlights and some of these, a lot of these are pulled from the Budget Highlights document that is accompanying the budget. So over 26 or $260 million in capital investment is proposed in this budget, 157 and a half million of which is for water, wastewater drainage, streets, and bridges. The budget includes the 5% GSI for all employees, and then market adjustment for police, fire, and several other positions. Improved benefits for city employees, including mental health options and reduced co-pays. The 30% reoccurring TMRS COLA for retired employees. Fortunate public safety positions, 11 firefighters and three police officers, and the creation of the Beautification and Culture Program, which is a half a million dollar investment. So on this slide, just some general fund highlights. So the budget for the general fund is 23.7 million and maintains the city's reserve policy of 28% of revenues. The budget includes a tax reduction of a half a cent. The manager, city manager's initiatives are aligned to council strategic goals. Property and sales tax account for 71.7% of the budget, which is a slight increase from last year's. Sales tax was increased by 8 million and is based off of 90% of the April projection for sales tax. And then there was increase in property tax revenues based on increased values. So in our other funds, hotel motel revenues are expected to reach new heights. I believe the budget's about $6.5 million for that, which is in line with where we project the current year to end. The new street maintenance fee is included in the '24 budget, which provides 158% more in street preservation work and allows for the new street capacity improvement program, which would involve an investment of over $100 million over the next five years. And then lastly, our new Parks Performance Fund is included in the budget, which provides transparency into the cost recovery for recreational activities, athletics, and the Mammoth Site. All right, so jumping into property tax valuations and rates. All right, so this slide shows the certified roles over the last several years. And as you can see, and as well as a portion that's under ARB. So although this year was a slight uptick in the amount under ARB, it's still a minimal amount of the overall role that's in ARB. ARB is the blue. So last year, you can barely see it, but this year you can see a little bit more. And so CAD goes through the ARB process and processes all those protests for people's property tax valuations. And in order to certify, they have to have 95% of the values and ARB process complete, which they did. And so we received the certified role on the 24th, which was a day before they were due. And you can see the city's overall certified value, which includes the TIF, increased significantly from last year. So we're at about $15.4 billion in total valuation. So this slide shows the certified role, the grand totals for everything, including those under the ARB process still as of the certification date, and breaks them out by the classification of the property. And so you can see on here that residential, single-family residential properties increased by almost 13% year-over-year and commercial increased by 18% for their real property. And it shows you the various breakdowns of the different classifications that the city has. So our primary areas are residential and commercial as far as value. At the very bottom of the first table is shows the base value, which is subtracts out the new value that was added to the tax rule. So this year, the new value added, it's about $384 million. And this is a decrease from what was originally presented, from what we received from CAD. So it came down from over $500 million down to 3.4. But it's still a very significant increase. And then on the, in the bar chart, just shows the compilation of the increase in values and where it's attributable attributable to, whether it's new growth or new value added or growth in the base. And that's also depicted in, the last table shows the split between residential and non-residential. I mean, you can still see that we're still, more than half of our valuation is residential, but we're slowly eating into the residential base and increasing the commercial value. So on this slide, you'll see the the TIFs. So in '23, part of the big jump is the addition of TIF 4. Whereas the prior years, it was TIFs 1, 2, and 3. In addition, '23, although the value wasn't significant, TIF 2 was terminated. But overall, the values for TIF continue to grow, especially the bedrock of the group is TIF 1, which makes up the bulk of the value. All right, so this slide is a little busy, but shows a variety of different aspects. So it shows the net taxable value for the city, which is the green bar. It shows the gross taxable value. So the difference between the gross and the net relates the the TIF valuation. It shows the ever-increasing growth in the market value of the city, which is important because in there, especially on a homestead basis, as values increase, market values increase, they're capped at the 10% growth. So there is some banking in there for the homestead cap for continued growth and valuations. And then the blue line shows that a year-over-year change. So from our proposed budget and the presentation that we gave to the final tax rules, there were slight adjustments in the composition of the MNO rate and the debt rate, based on information that we received subsequent to that date, which included our excess collections for the last year. The one thing I will say with the way the property tax rules and the property tax rates work, they operate off of two separate years. So there's a July-through-June year and then there's the our fiscal year. The July-through-June year is what excess collections, your collection rate is based off of, as well as our sales tax adjustment is based off of July-through-June collections. And so based on that information, the debt rate came down slightly from where we had originally proposed it at 1410 because of excess collections, which boosted up the MNO rate slightly. And it's just a slight adjustment in them. But overall, the overall tax rates stay the same with the half, half cent reduction. All right, so this slide shows our MNO property tax and the rate. And as you can see on this one, it continues to come down as far as MNO rate goes. The overall revenue has gone up because valuations have gone up. So on this slide shows the average homestead value. So the average homestead value, when you subtract out all the homestead exemption for a home, increased from $185,000 last tax year to $206,000 this tax year. And so overall, based on the growth in the values of the homes, the overall tax that a ratepayer would pay increased, but it's all due to the valuation increases. This slide illustrates it a little bit better of the half cent reduction. So $100,000 valued home, you see the $5 decrease in the overall property taxes taxes that that particular homeowner would pay. All right, so based on the roles, what what items have changed in the budget? So this slide shows the preliminary role information that we received, what our proposed budget was based off of, and then the final certified roles. And so you can see the overall values came down slightly from what we used in the proposed budget to what the final numbers were. It was about $165 million difference in the taxable value. And you also see the adjustment of about $170 million in new value correspondingly. So what does that mean? So in our proposed budget, based on the change in the values, on the general fund side, which is the MNO side, it's about a million dollar difference in revenue based on the adjustment. So it reduced the general fund revenues. And then there was a slight decrease in the debt revenues. And that 292 is the excess collections that was discussed earlier. So what does that mean for an average homeowner? So actually, based on the adjustment, it's based on the adjustments, they actually come down from our proposed to the certified for an average taxpayer. And so the average taxpayer will actually only see an increase of about a little under $12 based on the change per month. And so this is just rolling forward what's in the budget documents and with the updated valuation for a homestead and the impact that an average ratepayer would see. And as we've noted several times, even with all these adjustments and changes on an inflationary basis, not only is our utility bills lower than what they would be if we had just used inflation as our basis to increase the rates, but property tax charges are actually below where they would be as well. All right, so our recommended budget adjustments. So with the valuation adjustment, so we're proposing reducing property tax revenues by the million dollars in the general fund based on the values and using surplus, which is still above our policy requirements, to offset that adjustment. And then you also see the adjustment to the revenues for property tax revenues for the debt rate. So the General Debt Service Fund is where we record all of our tax-backed debt. And as you can see on the slide, our one-time enhancements, so one-time items, plus the funding that we're providing to the Street Capacity Program to help get that up and running exceeds what we're pulling from surplus this year. And then the impact, what does that all mean to the general fund? So these are updated estimates based off of our June quarter, quarter end. So we're projecting revenues to exceed expenses by a little over $5 million. And we're going to use some of that money to move to our Special Project Reserve Fund for future capital projects, as well as other capital, our other financing needs, some of which you'll see on the next meeting, including funding for the Cameron Park Zoo and updated meter reads. And at the very bottom shows what our new fund balances look like. As you'll see across the board, we're still above, even with our projections into '26, above our policy requirements, even with our planned drawdown of fund balance for next year. All right, and so at the July 11th presentation, one of the questions that came up related to the capital improvements plan. And so we want to provide you with an update on some of that information. So this slide basically shows the composition of the funding sources for the Enterprise Funds, CIP, which includes water, wastewater, WMRs, solid waste, and the airport, and then governmental CIP, which includes everything else and where all the funding is being pulled from in order to fund the significant investment in capital that the '24 budget proposes. All right, so the budget calendar. All right, so on today's agenda, we've gone through the filing of the tax rule and the budget filing and changes. And so on today's agenda, you'll have a couple of items from us. One is setting the date for the publication on the budget, which is going to be set for August 29th. And then you'll have a second reading of a couple of ordinances, including the ordinance in the departments and the Parks Performance Fund. Next Tuesday, as Bradley has mentioned, TMRS will be there to present on the nine different COLA COLA options that are available, as well as we'll have information for you on the cost difference between our current structure and the various COLA options and their percentage contribution requirements. Our financial advisors will be there to present and introduce themselves. We did an RFP, RFQ, and received several responses, and we've selected two firms that will be there to present and introduce themselves to you all. In addition, we'll go over any additional budget-related items on the 8th. And then on the 15th, we'll have the resolution setting the date for the public hearing on the tax rate, which would be September 5th. And then we'll have the first reading of the ordinance adopting a street maintenance fee. And because of, to provide additional time for the TMRS discussion, next Tuesday, we push back the quarterly financial update to the August 15th date. And then August 29th, as mentioned earlier, is the budget day. So we'll have the public hearing on the proposed budget. You'll vote on adopting the budget. We'll also have the public hearing and vote on the resolution on the municipal drainage utility fee schedule revisions. And then the second reading on the ordinance adoption, adopting a street maintenance fee. And then lastly, on September 5th, is the public hearing and first and final reading of the tax rate ordinance. Any questions?
I have a few here, but the one, can you go back just one slide, Nick? Is that the August 29th? I just want to make sure my calendar is right. That's, is that a 6 o'clock meeting? Maybe not.
I think usually it's a 6 o'clock meeting, although a brief.
Just wanted to make sure.
Is that, your understanding is well, Michelle? 6:00 PM meeting on the 29th?
We were talking, sorry.
I want to go back to pages 40 and 41, kind of the highlights, which I think are well laid out. The, the topics that this council is trying to tackle in this budget, the capital investment we're making, $260 million, which I think is probably, I'm sure it's the most we've ever tried to tackle in one year. The, the 5% increase, which I think is maybe at-market, below-market, at-market, but it's certainly not soaring above-market. We're trying to get, maintain and keep quality employees at, at the city of Waco. The COLA issue that we've talked about a couple of times, it's been, I think, 10 years since we've addressed it, right at 10, 8, something like that. So it's time to take a look at that. I'm all for that. The safety positions, the firefighters and the police officers, to me, that's core. We got, we've got to, this city has to be a safe place for folks, and I think that's a great investment. Going down to that next page, the highlight to me is we're able to reduce that tax rate. We're going to be able to do this now for the third year in a row, right, mayor, of our use of that tax rate. So that was one of our goals in this, in this budget as well. I know that we're kind of honing, we're, we're getting down to the wobble, let's kind of stop it, and we're, and over the next few weeks, we're going to get this thing nailed down. Just a couple of, a couple of things I'd still like to see, not that it will move the needle much on what we're talking about here, but looking at a couple of traditional financial ratios, putting this in the, putting our numbers in the context of debt, where we can see in the, the act for what the bond debt looks like in general, and then each of the major utility funds, and kind of, and get a feel for that debt level and the cash flow requirement to service that debt, which is kind of some traditional, so I know we don't do that in fund management, it doesn't work quite that way, but on the three, four or five larger funds, if I could just, if we could all get a feel for how much debt do we have, what are we putting on new, what is, where does that put us, what does, what is the delta there, and what is the delta on the debt service requirement, where we're asking through rates and tax, taxes, that's how we're paying for this debt. So, and I think we're being conservative here, but I just, I think it'll help for folks to see that we're still pretty conservative, even as we tackle. You know, we always start every year, we've got $2 billion worth of projects here that we gotta, we gotta find, we gotta find the 100 million, or the, in this case, a couple hundred million this year of what do we need to get done this year? So it's kind of a prioritization challenge, and there's, there's streets all over the city that need to be fixed. We're trying to get to, get to them as best we can, but we don't want to overload the city with an inordinate amount of debt either. So I like the, the look of this, where it's going, and as we get the detail out over the next few weeks, I'm looking forward to getting this, getting this thing done.
The only thing, I'll add one note. I agree with everything Councilmember Holmes said, but I really liked the note that commercial valuations are on the rise. I think that's the goal of a lot of our economic development work. One reason why we try to recruit businesses here is not just because of the jobs that they bring to our community, the economic, economic vibrancy, but also because of tax revenue. And the more businesses and commercial that's paying property tax, the more we can do exemptions to be thoughtful for residents and homeowners. So that's a great trend to, to observe. I also want to highlight, I really appreciate the work that our team did on the budget communications. I thought the PDF and highlights that staff has disseminated to the community through email and on the website, and social media has been really helpful. It's really user-friendly, and again, this is dense work, but I think that telling the story of what we're doing is important, and I see us doing that, and I really appreciate it.
I appreciate the budget in brief.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, there's a lot in here, and if we can get a budget in brief, if you want to go to the big binder, go to the big binder, but if you want the budget in brief, you can really see a lot of what's happening, and it's a, it's a real success. So thanks to staff for that. This is great, look forward to continuing down this road, and we're on the home stretch. So thanks for everybody's work here.
I was like, surely there's a slide.
That was it. We're changing it up a little bit.
Paul didn't say much.
Thanks, Paul and Nick, thank you for all that y'all have been, all that y'all have been doing.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Nick.
Alright. Clint, you've got plenty of time this time. Next public hea, our next work session is the overview of the public hearings, planning item public hearings. There's 11 of them, as I mentioned earlier. Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, will be covering those today. I think there's one that's getting pulled from the agenda that he'll let you know about as well.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Bradley. We do have 11 public hearings. The first one is dealing with our new fire station 15. This is approval of the final PUD for that fire station 15. It's part of the Callan Village. PUD, which is a master plan subdivision out at the corner of Ritchie Road and Pantherway in far west Waco. This is the approved concept plan that was approved back in 2017, has a mix of single-family residential, and then some townhouse, and then some commercial, and multifamily, and then at the very corner at Panther and Ritchie Road, you can see the planned fire station there, two acres. They're on the, this will be the phase three of the development, phase one and two. One is finished out, a single-family, and phase two is being built right now, which is a combination of some townhouses and single-family. And then phase three will be the fire station. This is the site plan. There are some requirements for some landscaping, buffering requirements, and then some architectural requirements that are part of the, the PUD, and the design meets those requirements. And then here's some pictures of the subdivision and the location. You see the edge of the new fire tower, a water tower there, too, and it's looking back at the intersection. Plan Commission, we did not have any input at the Plan Commission hearing, and Plan Commission did recommend approval of the PUD plan for the fire station. Our next public hearing is 506. This is a special permit request for a car wash at 5750 Bagby Avenue. We did receive a request from the applicant to withdraw this after the Plan Commission hearing, and staff does recommend approval of that withdrawal. Council will need to vote on that. 507 is a special permit request for a short-term rental type 1 at 920 Camp Drive. This is an R1B zoning. Camp is just off Valley Mills Drive near Singer, a little pocket neighborhood behind Valley Mills Drive there. Type 1 is either owner-occupied or onsite manager-operated short-term rental, which does, is permitted in an R1B zoning through the special permit process. This is the house here, and then you can see the little guest quarters in the back. That's the, the part that they'll rent out for short-term rentals. And then the owners will be onsite and the home when it's rented out. We did receive some opposi, opposition from the notices. We had four letters of opposition from three different properties out of, I believe, 58 notices that were sent out for the case. Plan Commission did recommend approval based on the requirements for short-term rental.
Did Clint Holmes, here, did those letters of opposition comprise a critical mass of those?
No, it, the threshold to trigger the supermajority requirement is 20%, and it was about 7%.
Okay, thanks.
508 is an ordinance amendment dealing with subdivision ordinance in the recently approved House Bill 3699 by the state that goes into effect September 1st. This bill has a bunch of different components dealing with subdivision regulation, but there's two specific items that impact our subdivision ordinance that we need, we felt like we needed to be amended to comply with the state law. The first one is dealing with the shot clock and what's required to be submitted and approved with the subdivision plat. Currently, and this was adopted back four years ago, when the shot clock bill was put in place, it required not only the plat, but construction plans be submitted and approved through the plating process. In this bill, it actually takes the construction plans out of the approval process and the shot clock requirements, and so it will go back to the way it was before, previously, before, four years ago. So those will be reviewed and approved outside of the plating process by our Public Works and Utilities Departments, and no longer be a part of the approval process for plats. And so we're removing construction plans from the subdivision ordinance completely. And then the second part, the second amendment that we're proposing to address requirements in the bill are dealing with right-of-way dedication. Currently, our subdivision ordinance requires developers to dedicate right-of-way for future thoroughfares. So for example, in our thoroughfare plan that plans out future roadways for growth, if, if one of those proposed collectors or arterials is adjacent to or goes through a property that's being developed, there was a requirement to dedicate right-of-way for that future roadway. The legislation takes that ability away from the cities. It, so cities may not require dedication of land for future street or alley construction unless it's intended by the owner of the track and is included in the city's capital improvement plan. And so we felt like to comply with this legislation, we needed to remove that requirement out of our subdivision ordinance. So effectively, it's, it's going to make right-of-way dedication a negotiation process with developers when they come in with development. There's some other requirements in this bill that we'll need to comply with, but these are the only two changes that we felt like needed to amend the ordinance. There's some requirements for the, what needs to be included with the plat submitting, you have to post that on your website. We have a little extra time to do that at January 1st, so we're working on that. There's also some requirements to tie any kind of studies that are required in the plating process to some state law that allows that study, so we're working to comply with that. It also allows the Plan Commissioner, City Council, to give authority to city staff to approve plats. If you remember, we just went through the process to amend ordinance to allow the Plan Commission to approve plats instead of the council, so I think we're, we're comfortable with the way that setup is right now. But in the future, you know, the city can authorize staff, give authorization to staff members to approve plats if so choose, but we feel like we have a good system the way it is currently. Any questions on that?
This is legislative now at the state level, so we kind of have to change unless we want to, I guess, put a stake in the sand and say we aren't changing ours, but...
Yeah, that's correct.
Not sure that would lead to...
Yeah.
Alright.
Our next public hearing, 509, is dealing with some easements, abandonment of some easements out in Foxborough addition. This is a developing single-family subdivision out of, off of Tree Lake and China Spring. They've been working with the city to realign and upsize sewer lines that will follow the street, and they've done that, and so they're requesting to abandon the old easements where the, the old lines are that actually go through some of the lots. So we recommend an approval of that. Plan Commission followed that recommendation. 510 is another abandonment. This is a, some right-of-way of Jackson Avenue at the corner of Webster and 11th Street. This is part of the redevelopment of the diversified product building. They're looking at reclaiming a portion of Jackson that's up against the railroad tracks to incorporate that into the development. It is the, the portion of Jackson that's unpaved and actually not great to have so close to the railroad tracks, so this will be a safety improvement as well as letting that be developed into their site. So, you know, the, the idea is that once this is redeveloped, you'll have grass area, a buffer, grass buffer between the tracks, and then a parking lot that will be constructed that will include that abandoned part of Jackson. And this is similar to the way we were treating other properties in between 8th Street and 11th Street along this corridor.
How much of that is railroad right-of-way anyway? It always seemed to me like we were...
So the, yeah, so the, you can see it here, the, the railroad is within the Jackson Avenue right-of-way, and they have a 30-foot, basically a 30-foot easement in our right-of-way, so 15 feet on either side of the tracks is their area, and then beyond that is city right-of-way. So they're, they're asking to abandon 14 feet of that, which will take them up to that 15 feet from the tracks.
Thanks, Clint.
511 is a rezoning request from Harris Arnart WTX Development Company, and then the city of Waco expanded this request. It includes some, some housing that is not conforming and currently in, in the commercial zoning. This is a row of seven lots right across from the HEB on Park Lake, 19th Street. You have some vacant lots and then three houses, I believe, three or four houses in that, what's currently commercially zoned. They're requesting to, to change it to R2, which would allow new residential development on the vacant lots, and then bring the existing homes into conformance with the zoning ordinance. Here's a picture of the vacant lots, and then you can see the houses that are currently commercially zoned that will be rezoned to R2. Everybody was in favor of this. Plan Commission recommended approval of it. The next case, 512, is a rezoning from '02 to '03 at 3501 West Waco Drive. This is the... This is the property that has two zonings on it, so a portion of it is O3 that faces 36th Street, and then portions of O2 that faces 35th, 35th Street, and they're just wanting to consolidate it, so it's all one zoning district. It's the Zimmerman Law Firm there. Plan Commission recommended approval of that, and there was no, no opposition to it. 513 is a rezoning from R3C to O3 at 1816 Morrow Avenue. This is in Sanger Heights Neighborhood Association, just north of Waco Drive, near 18th Street. This is a area that's designated for mixed use in our lane use plan, and then you can see the zoning, especially on that block, is a mix of O3, R3C, which is multifamily zoning, and then some more O3, and so they're requesting it to go to O3. It's currently a vacant lot. There was an old, I believe it was a triplex on there that was torn down in the past two or three years, and the owners wanted to redevelop it. O3 allows a mix of uses from single-family to office to limited commercial, where the current R3C zoning is more of just a multifamily residential zoning. And you can see up and down, Sanger, you have commercial at 18th where there's a church, and then it's right next to a little strip center there that's, I believe, currently a hair salon, and then you have an office building across from the property as well. Plan Commission did recommend approval of that one as well. We did have one letter in opposition. I think their, their main concern is they, they wanted to see it developed as a home. The current zoning does allow for single-family residential, but the proposed zoning does as well, so we feel like with the zoning, the rest of the zoning on the block and then the uses that are allowed are compatible with that area. 19, 514 is a request by the city of Waco. This is a tax foreclosure lot at 1915 Ruder Avenue that we're preparing to put in our steel bid sale packets. That's currently commercial zone, but is a residential lot, so we are requesting to change that to residential zoning. It's currently just a vacant lot there, 50-foot lot, and it's got residences adjacent to it. Plan Commission recommended approval of that one. And then our last public hearing is at 2324 South University Parks. This is a large tract, a 73-acre tract near the intersection of La Salle and University Parks that goes all the way back to the river. It's currently zoned M2 zoning, which is industrial zoning, and they're requesting a mix of C2, which is mixed-use commercial, and then O2, which is our mixed-use multifamily residential that you, that is the dominant zoning for Baylor and then all the surrounding area of Baylor. And then this property is currently vacant, and you can see dominated by student housing, private student housing in that corridor. You can see the Farrell Center over there. And Plan Commission, they'd recommend approval of this one as well, and there was no, no opposition to it. That's it?
Thank you, Clint.
Sure.
All right. Are there any requests for future gen items? If not, we will recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 4:20 p.m.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session, executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, meet and confer agreement meeting between the city of Waco, Texas and the Waco Police Association. Collective bargaining agreement meeting, meetings between the city of Waco, Texas and Local 478 of the International Association of Firefighters. Possible litigation regarding possible use of per and polyfluoroalcohol substance in foam in airports. Petition for consent of creation of Woodway Municipal Utility District Number One of McLennan County filed by Woodway 567 LLC. Property tax, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.